I'm Lieutenant Colonel Davis, the Commander of 321 the Gimlet Nation. So, on behalf of Sergeant Major Moody and myself, I just want to say thank you guys for coming out tonight. I know that it's probably the first day of having kids home from school and the first unofficial day of summer, so it's probably been a little bit busy for you mothers and parents of school-aged kids. So, thanks for making it out tonight. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to go through a pre-deployment brief ahead of our Pacific Pathways deployment that we're going to take after block leave this summer. I don't typically use a microphone, but I am using a microphone tonight because you'll see the video recorder going. What we're doing is we're going to video record this and then we're going to post this meeting onto the battalion's Facebook page so that then everybody has access to it. Friends of the Gimlet Nation, family that may or may not be here, or that it will not be here or not here tonight, they can use this information. If they friend the Facebook page, or if they search the Gimlet Nation, they can find it and then they've got access to the information as well. So, here tonight, you've got me. I'll go over an overview, not an operations order, or a full deployment brief for Pacific Pathways, but I will cover generally where we're going to be and kind of the timeframe that we're going to be there. And then I'm going to turn it over to the team from ACS led by Ms. Monica Teal. She's got some folks here to share some information for you as we go forward. We've also got Brigade Legal that'll have some information for us as well. And then I'll turn it back over and cover a couple of things at the end, and then we'll get out of here. We'll go ahead and get started. So, Lieutenant Winfield. All right, going to follow this chronologically? I'm not going to follow it kind of as a Pacific Pathway 17-2 or 17-3. So, just for you spouses out there, when we say Pacific Pathways, what is Pacific Pathways? Pacific Pathways is a strategic cooperation initiative that the US Army has come up with. It is really joint in nature and is a United States Pacific Command initiative in which we put United States soldiers, sailors, and Marines in critical countries throughout the Pacific to partner with the host nation's security forces to build a better rapport and to strengthen our security throughout the Pacific. Each year, there's a number of Pacific Pathways that take place. This year, we happen to be privileged to take part in two of those pathways. One of those pathways is 17-3, which we'll discuss here, which is HHC, Alpha Company, Bravo Company, and portions of ICO. And then we've got Pathway 17-2, which is Charlie Company, a headquarters element from 51 Cav, and then elements from ICO. We will cover this by covering chronologically what's going to happen first, and then we'll go through. So, the first one up is 17-3. Again, that's HHC, Alpha, Bravo Company, and portions of ICO. And the first thing we'll do is we will take off from here around the first week of July after block leave, and we will head to Australia for Exercise Talisman Saber. All right, Exercise Talisman Saber is a major readiness exercise inside Australia for one of their Army Brigades as they assume high readiness. We will be participating in that. So, if you remember NTC, or if you've done an NTC rotation in the past, this is essentially an Australian NTC rotation that we are going to participate in. We will be primarily in Queensland area of Australia on the northeast coast. All right, we will fly in and we will move by ground as we continue to go north in the coast of Australia. So, we'll fly in, we'll do our normal reception staging and integration activities at the Port of Rockhampton, and then we'll move up to the Army Base vicinity of Townsville. From Townsville, we will go into the Shoal Water Bay Training Area, execute training. At the conclusion of training, we're going to have the opportunity to participate in the Australian Jungle School, which Alpha and Bravo Company and HHC and ICO will have the opportunity to go up and spend about four days in the jungle at the Jungle School in Tully. Once that is complete, we will then consolidate, reorganize ourselves, and then we will prepare to push on to the next location on 17-3, which is Thailand. However, chronologically, slide is the beginning of Pathway 17-2 with Charlie Company and portions of ICO. 17-2 starts off with a deployment around the second week in July and sees our forces going from Fort Wainwright into Singapore. All right, Singapore, if you know anything about Singapore, it is literally a big jungle and a big city combined into one thing. It's pretty small. It is a city-state. Charlie Company is going to deploy, and they're going to participate with the Singapore Armed Forces, similar unit that we participated with at NTC, and they're going to go through another two-week training event there. So, literally, they fly in and then they get moved by ground into the training camp. If you're looking there, it is the Mandai Hill Camp, and then they'll do some live-fire training at the Sungai Gdong Camp, and then they will position. At the conclusion of 17-2 Exercise Tiger Bomb, Charlie Company and ICO will move by ground north into Malaysia, and we will cover that shortly. So, back to 17-3. After we have left Australia, we will be going to Thailand for Exercise Hanuman Guardian. We will fly into essentially Thailand, landing in vicinity of Bangkok. From Bangkok, we'll move by ground up to the Camp Sarasi location where we will conduct our training. We'll be split from there as we conduct live-fire training for this exercise partnered with the Thai Armed Forces at a Kawiyei Training Camp, which is only about 30 minutes away from Fort Sarasi, or Camp Sarasi. All right, so that's generally where it is. If you can see the dot there in Thailand on the screen that's in front of you, that's where we will be. All right, we will be there for approximately a little over two weeks, and then we will refit, restage, and then from Thailand, all elements will move to Japan. Going back to 17-2 in Malaysia, 17-2 Exercise Kara Strike in Malaysia, all right, at the Camp Mentacab, long bus ride again out of Singapore into Malaysia to Camp Mentacab. From Camp Mentacab, Charlie Company will be there for additional two weeks. They will conduct bilateral training with the Malaysian Armed Forces, which will include exercising in the jungle. All right, from there, after two weeks, they'll consolidate and reorganize, and Charlie Company will actually be the first elements that will deploy to Japan for Exercise Orient Shield. Exercise Orient Shield is the culmination for both Pathway 17-2 and 17-3. The entire battalion will consolidate in Japan vicinity of Camp Fuji. All right, and then from Camp Fuji, this exercise will see us push out to a number of different locations as we partner with the Japanese Self-Defense Force. Critical to note on these pathways is the following. One, we will be partnered bilaterally, as I stated earlier, with the host nation. So, everything we'll do will be with either the Japanese, Malaysians, Singapore Army, Thai Army, or the Australians. In there, there will also be US Marines, other US Army elements from across the task, from across the Army and across the Pacific. There will be live firing going on. We will conduct platoon live fires in Singapore. Charlie Company will execute that, and then Alpha and Bravo Company will conduct platoon live fires in Thailand. From there, we will move, and then we will go to Japan, and in Japan, we will re-execute platoon live fires, and then we will execute a company combined arms live fire with a number of assets and enablers alongside the Japanese Self-Defense Force. So, understand that, yes, we will be conducting live-fire training as we are gone. Very similar, and just as we did at NTC, we're just going to be doing it in a foreign country partnered with their host nation's security forces. As part of this initiative for a pathway, we are a ready force for the Pacific Commander. As such, we're there, so if anything goes on, we are a quick, easy force. I just want you guys to know that and understand that because, you know, we've all been here before, a couple deployments, and you're never home until you're actually standing in the kitchen, right? So, the deal is, is we could find ourselves, if something goes squarely inside the Pacific region, we are an easy button and something that's available for the PACOM Commander, all right, and our National Command Authority. I just want to say that and get that out there so that everybody's prepared in the event that for some reason, here we go, the first week in October, and we're not back yet. All right, don't be surprised, even though we should be back, don't be surprised. I want to make a pitch for this as well to make sure that communication is flowing a little bit outside of Pathways and just some expectation management, is as we return from Pathways, we fall in on the Brigade Training Plan. And that Brigade Training Plan has us going almost essentially right back into the field down in the Donnelly Training Area for Company Exavals. Right now, our window for that is, I think we head out about the 10th of November. So, if we look at it, we'll have a little bit of time in October, but we will be preparing, and then we'll be going down to the Donnelly Training Area to execute Company Exavals, which will involve yet another Company live fire. So, what I, and then the boat from Pathways with all of our equipment gets back sometime to middle, end of November. So, if you look at that, I will tell you this, and here's expectation. You are really going to enjoy Christmas because that's going to be about the first time that we're all going to be able to get back together and enjoy some time, quality time together. All right, so just know that we can put, we can bank on our next block leave period, all right, after the summer one, as being when we can really take a rest, all right, and get back with each other. That's expectation management for you guys. All right. This deployment is always supposed to be expeditionary. What that means is we are not going to have access, your spouses deployed are not going to have access, all right, to their phones, or to Internet, or to social media in the way that they do right now. Not even in the way that they did, or did have it at NTC. All right, it will be there. The USO is following us, all right, they're supporting this. There will be civilian email capability, there will be Internet capability. It just will not be as frequent as I think we are all accustomed to. Also, we have made a deliberate decision not to do snail mail or hard copy mail. It is just going to be too hard in order to get mail delivered here, you know, packaged, and then sent, and then figure out how we're going to get that mail into three separate countries and follow our soldiers around as we go. So, we did not do mail. Sorry, here it upfront was a deliberate decision. So, what I'm telling you is, is this is expeditionary, and for 90 days, I would be prepared to have reduced contact, all right, with your spouse. Okay? Expectation management for you. That being said, here's how we're going to maintain contact. We're going to maintain contact in two ways. The first and foremost is the battalion Facebook page. All right, we will be posting updates as regularly as we can, if not daily, at least weekly, on the Facebook page of what everybody on Pathways is doing. All right, the other method is going to be via battalion newsletter. We will publish at least monthly a battalion newsletter that will cover what we're going on. The way we're going to publish and distro that newsletter is going to be via email. So, this goes back, if you all have participated in our NTC pre-deployment brief, or if you've participated in our newcomers briefings, this is why it is, it is critical that we have a good civilian email address for your spouse, or for the folks that are not going to be deploying. All right, it is critical because that is how we are going to pass information. So, if you may be one of those people who decided that, hey, I wasn't really going to give a valid email address before, I would suggest at the end of this tonight, you give a very good email address, all right, to your POCs before you get out of here because that is going to be the way that we share information and get information moving. There will be contact in the event of emergencies. Primarily, that's going to be the normal way. It'll come back here through Rear D. Rear D will get in contact with the Command Forward, all right, and then from there, we will take the appropriate action. Not to say that we're going to be in the middle of a jungle thousands of miles from anywhere, and, you know, three weeks later, we come stumbling out, all right, and the world has just literally existed for three weeks, and we have no idea what's going on. That's not going to be the case, okay? We will have regular contact, we will have the ability to react in the event of emergencies, but just don't go into it expecting that you're going to have the same contact that you would, or that you'd normally, or typically have as it does today. All right. With that, are there any questions on Pathways in general right now that anybody has? Any questions right now? From anybody? Okay, if you think of a question later, I will be coming back up and I will do my best to answer, but right now, I'm going to turn it over to the team from ACS. First up is Ms. Monica Teal to give us some information on what they can provide. You are welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. So, I'm Monica Teal. I'm the Financial Readiness Program Manager, and I'm standing in for Danny O'Donnell, your Mobilization and Deployment Program Manager. So, we're going to give you some information about Army Community Service. Can anybody tell me where ACS is located? Welcome Center, excellent. How many of you have brought your spouses to see us? Okay, so we're here for soldiers and for family members, not just soldiers. We want to make sure that your family members are aware of the resources that are available, where we're located, so when you are away and you're doing your mission, that we can support your family members back here. Okay, there's going to be, this is already posted on the FT Wainwright ACS Facebook page. So, how many of you have cell phones? Okay, how many of you are using Facebook? Can you pull your cell phones out and go to your Facebook and like us so you can get access to not only what's going on at ACS, but you can also get the download package with the checklist on here, deployment checklist, and all of the resources? So, FT Wainwright ACS, Facebook, and that'll help you get plugged into what's going on, especially while your soldiers are gone. Okay, so, we're going to go to the next slide. So, how many of you have seen this? This is the information of programs available at ACS. Excellent. So, we want to make sure that you have an up-to-date contact information. We do have a new INR program manager that's available to us. This is also in the packet so that you can provide this not only for the soldiers while you're here, but for your family members while you're gone. So, if there is a need that comes up, so say that you have a spouse and she's ready to go to work, or he's ready to go to work, who are you going to, who are you going to call from ACS? You guys know that Employment Readiness is available to help with resumes, job searches, mock interviews, so we can help with all of that. So, it's an excellent time in Alaska to get some extra income coming in. But we have all kinds of great programs, and the Army Emergency Relief Officer is going to talk to you about his program. I'm going to talk to you about Financial Readiness. The other program I want to talk to you about is the Volunteer Program. How many of you volunteer? Excellent. So, are you getting credit for those by logging into the Volunteer Management Information System? No? Okay, so, you want to make sure that you get logged into the VMS system through MyArmy1 Source, and you get your hours logged in. It's great for transitional, but also, if you're a family member and you're at home and you want to volunteer, we can hook you up with a position. There's all kinds of position descriptions on there, match you up with your interests because sometimes when they're deployed and there's not a lot of contact, we might get a little bored, and you can come out and network and also get some job skills on top of that. And because it's registered through VMS, the certified hours can help you with actual hiring employment later, if you want to do that. Next slide. Okay, so some of the things that you want to look at, we have the deployment checklist. So, if you're going to be transitioning responsibility, you want to make sure that you have access. Soldiers, when they're deployed, if they're deployed in another area and they're using the debit card and it's the same account as yours, what could happen? They could get flagged, and it could get shut down. So, one of the things that we might have you consider is having a bank account for the bills, and then have a separate account for spending so that your bills go out on time and they're not negatively impacted by a fraudulent shutdown. So, you want to make sure that you have that, that you contact your institution and let them know that you're going to be going, so you don't go and try to pay for something and then they've locked your account down because they're trying to protect your money, but they don't realize that you're not here. Okay, access to pay bills. So, if you're still going to manage your bills, you want to try to make things a little bit easier, you can utilize something called Web Bill Pay. Web Bill Pay is something that a lot of financial institutions can do for free, and you can set up when you want that money to go out and send that, set that up as an automatic payment out. The other thing you can do is auto pays. You just want to make sure if someone's bringing money out of the same account, that there is some kind of accountability so you don't pull out money when there's something that's going to be trying to come out later. Contact for FRGs. So, this is an excellent opportunity for you to get involved with your family readiness group. Danny O'Donnell usually helps with coordinating, so if you don't know who your FRG leader is, hopefully after tonight you will, but if you don't know, or you get new spouses coming in, you can talk to them and let them know. This is the best way to get information. My husband was in the Marine Corps first, and then he switched over to the Army. And as a spouse, when he would tell me, you need to come to these briefings, I'd be like, why do I need to do that? I work, I go to school, I'm busy. And then I started finding out about information, and they would say, well, where'd you get that information? Oh, that was at the deployment brief, or that was at the FRG meeting. And I was like, honey, why didn't I get this information? He said, oh, I didn't think you'd be interested. So, I said, okay, I think I better get going to these meetings so I can find out what's going on. So, it may or may not pertain to you, but it's an excellent time to network, get the official information. If you're ever needing any assistance, you can come to ACS. The Information and Referral Program will hook you up with either an agency on the installation or off the installation. So, some of the things, when we were getting ready to deploy, sometimes we'd get a little anxious, and we might have some challenges with emotional spending. How many of you are going to be PCSing about 90 days after you get back? Anybody? Oh, yes or no? So, we do have the Levy Brief, the first Thursday of the month. If you're going to be PCSing within the next year, we would highly encourage you to go ahead and attend it, the first Thursday of the month at the Welcome Center, Building 3401, from 09:00 to 11:00, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And then in the afternoon, we have a Financial Readiness portion for preparing for the PCS, and that's from 1:30 to 3:00. The reason why we put that information out there is because, because we have COLA, because we have additional income, if you're PCSing, that BAH goes down, that COLA goes away. And I had plenty of budgets where they had like $2,000 surplus here, and then a negative 1,300 at the PCS. We can help you with the financial plan to make sure that you're going to be able to have a strategy, either to sustain until spouse gets new employment, or to get debt liquidated, or we can look and see what options are available there. So, Family Care Plan. How many of you have a Modified Family Care Plan? Okay, we have some. Okay, so the Modified Family Care Plan, so it's, a Family Care Plan is required for single soldiers that have dependents, right? A Modified Family Care Plan is critical for families because while you're deployed, your soldiers are deployed, something happens to the spouse that's behind. We want to make sure that there's a short-term and a long-term family care plan, and that you have funds reserved to execute that plan. So, what happens to your children if something happens to your spouse and you're not here? Does anybody know? They go into Child Protective Services. Okay, it's more traumatic for your family members. So, if your spouse was in a car accident, had to go in the hospital, you wouldn't want your children to go into Child Protective Services. But what you can do to get ready is you can register with CYSS because it's free, and you can have them part of your short-term emergency family care, Modified Family Care Plan. You could have a friend or neighbor that you trust be a short-term care provider until your family member can come to Alaska, or they can, you can get the children out to that next of kin. So, and if you have any questions about that, Danny can help, or I can help you with getting things together so that you can prepare for your family members, soldiers can prepare for their family members where you are. How many of you have ever deployed and lost the ID card? Yeah, okay. So, want to make sure that your family members at least have the opportunity to replace their military ID card because that's how they get health care benefits. If, they're going to be talking to you about all the powers of attorney, we just wanted to touch on that point because at ACS, I can't tell you how many times that we have family members that are trying to replace these things, and with the limited amount of contact that you're going to have, we want to make sure that we don't have any challenges for you there. Maintenance on vehicles. So, how many of you have just gotten here and you still need to winterize your vehicle? Okay, so your families are all taken care of. You also want to look at maintenance, anything coming up. Make sure your spouse knows the mechanic that you use. How many of you are the mechanics in your home? Yeah, so we have a few. So, who do you trust out in town or on post? Let your family members know who, nice, so that you can, you can get that work done so they have a good point of contact. Or if there's an emergency, if you own your own home, you have somebody that they can contact like a plumber or a repair person. How many of you know where the Safe Haven or Family Assistance Center is? Have you, okay, so you guys have participated in exercise before? So, the Family Assistance Center is a one-stop shop that if, in the event of a national emergency, a disaster happens, there's going to be a main focal point for our soldiers and family members to get assistance on the installation, and the primary location is at ACS in the Welcome Center. But in the event that that happens, the NICL will go out and let you know where to go. So, we want to make sure that you guys are plugged in there. Of course, the ACS, the FT Wainwright ACS Facebook page, information will be put out there as well. So, if something were to happen, we have a plan for emergency practices, okay? Okay. While you're gone, if you are not the person that's in charge usually of refilling your fuel tank or water tanks, make sure you have that point of contact information and how the payment process is, so you guys don't have any challenges there. So, ACS, if you have any questions, ACS is available to help you, get you linked to resources. We have all kinds of programs available for you to help you be successful, be mission-ready, and so that you can manage things back home and your soldiers can take care of business wherever the Army sends them. Does anybody have any questions right now? Okay, I'm going to turn it over, next slide. Oh, CYSS, okay. I was thinking it was Military Family Life Consultant. All right, Child New Services. Did you know that you are eligible for free respite care while the soldiers are gone this time? 16 hours, okay? Do you think that your spouses are going to need that? Yeah? Because why? When your, when your, when soldier comes home, what do they do? Hey, honey, can you help me with this? Can you help me do that? If not, you're, they're going to have the kids 24/7. They might need a little bit of a break, right? Or they might need to go to a medical appointment that they don't want to bring the kids to. So, you can register for free, as I mentioned earlier, with the CYSS Parent Central Services. Get them registered, it doesn't cost anything, and then you can take advantage of that respite care. Additionally, there's going to be hourly care available, and soldiers that are deployed, you want to have the deployment orders have priority, so you want to make sure you let them know you have the orders available when you go. You can give them a copy. All right, there's other programs still available, the regular, the regular care. So, you want to just get on the website and see if there's any services that you might be able to utilize while your soldiers deploy. Next. Okay, so Military Family Life Consultant. We're going to be followed by Craig, and he's going to let you know about his program and the resources available for you there.
Good evening. My name is Craig Lacy, and I'm a Military Family and Life Counselor. How many of you soldiers or wives or family members know where the MFLAG is? A small percentage. Well, unfortunately, we probably, the military is best kept secret, but we could be of great service to you if you really utilize our services. Let me explain to you exactly how we came about. In 2004, when our troops were coming back from downrange, OSD saw a need because family members, the soldiers were having difficulty integrating back into the family and the society. So, what they did that time, they brought in 20 counselors, and it worked so well. Since then, we have about 700 counselors today throughout the world. How we support our military, we support our military throughout the world. I've been personally to Korea, Seoul, Daegu. I've been to Germany, I've been to Fort Greeley, I've been to Fort Dix, and now I'm at Wainwright. I've been to Fort Drum, and with each of those different posts present with different challenges. I know here at Wainwright, I just got here, and I understand I caught a good break, but I know I was at Fort Greeley back in 2010, and I landed there in December, in November, and I didn't leave there until February, until March, and I promised myself I would never come back to Alaska. But in any event, I came back in the springtime. Who we are, basically, we provide counseling, we provide non-medical counseling to our soldiers, our family members, and our children. That's very important. With deployments, we come to understand that a lot of times when the soldier, whether that be a female soldier or a male soldier, when it leaves the household, it causes a disruption within the family. And that's known as homestasis, basically mean that the family goes through an unbalancing thing, and usually, the person that's left behind has to pick up the support, and that could be very trying to that person. Also, the children are also affected because of that soldier leaving, and sometimes they can act out. We do have MFLAGs on post, they're CYB. We do have M-Flacs on post, their CYB M-Flacs, their child specialist M-Flacs. I'm an adult specialist M-Flac, but we do have four female M-Flacs on post, as well as myself. The minimum credentials that we have, a master's level, some of us are PhDs, and we all hold licenses. One thing unique about our program, and we can't stress this enough with our soldiers, is that we don't keep any records. We're not like behavioral health. This was implemented for the soldier and the family members, so that we could provide services to you. The only time that we can break the confidentiality, and because I am licensed, if a soldier comes to me, and this actually happened to me at Fort Drum, a soldier was coming back from downrange, I met him at the plane, he didn't check in his gun, and he heard that his wife had been messing around on him, and he told me he was going to kill her and her boyfriend. And I had to go to Command, and I had to report them, and we helped that soldier. So the only time I can actually break that confidentiality is if that soldier wants to hurt themselves or someone else. Other than that, if Command comes to me and asks me a question about a particular soldier, I cannot divulge that information. This program is for you soldiers. Okay? That's very important for you to know. How you can access us? We were located at 3401 at the Welcome Center, but recently, we moved to the S-FAC. Our hours are from Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. As I stated before, we have four female M-Flacs here. We have, I believe, four child M-Flacs here, and we have two male M-Flacs. So depending on who you might want to see, you have that choice. Let me see, I just about covered it all. If you want to access us, you can go, not necessarily to Command, but we do have, you can go to ACS, and they have our number. You also see flyers throughout the post with our number on it. So do anybody have any questions about our program and how we can help you? This is a program that's geared for you. Now with the soldiers deploying, God bless you, as far as the family members, God bless you. We know that the family, you know, is tested just as much as the soldier. So thank you all for your service.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm back. So how many of you are going to have less than 12 years of service as of December 31st of this year? Raise your hands high. Okay. How many of you have completed the Blended Retirement System Training on JKO? Okay, so we have a few. So did you know there's an op-ward that is requiring every eligible soldier that has going to have 12 years or less as of December 31st of this year to take the training and print out your certificate? If you didn't know that, you want to make sure, okay, good, some people know that. You want to make sure that you do that. Because it's a retirement plan, we want you to talk to your family members, because retirement planning is a family event, right? Family planning. So we won't go over the particulars about it, but I have already had from previous deployment spouses that came in to learn more about it. So if you want to come in, we can talk to you about it after you do the training, bring your certificate with you. This is, the training is going to end this year. If you don't do the training, you're not going to have an opportunity to opt into the new system. If you don't want to go into the new system, you're automatically going to be grandfathered into the system that we're in right now, which is a 20-year pension, 50% of your high three. Okay? The new system has 5% government match. It also has continuation pay in years eight to 12. And then it also, it also has the lump sum option at retirement. So you want to make sure that you do the training and either make a decision, yes, you want to do it, or no, you don't want to do it. Okay? And if you have any questions, come see us at ACS Financial Readiness, and we'll be happy to go over those programs with you, so you can make an informed decision. And the reason why we want you to make an informed decision, it's irrevocable. So either inaction or action, it's going to be a one-time deal. Okay? All right. In 2016, the National Defense Authorization Act is requiring that every time we have a major life event, or you've got to have to do a budget with your Command, first terms have to do a budget with your Command. So if you're going to get married, going to get divorced, why divorced? What happens to your pay? BH goes away, COLA goes away. You have to provide support payments. So you want to make sure that you have a financial plan, so you can provide the required support to your family members, and you don't go into financial hardship as well. So we want to make sure you have plans going on there. If you're going to buy a car, a major purchase, you want to make sure that you meet with a financial counselor. Now, in your unit, I believe, do you guys have a CFNCO in your unit? Some of the units have CFNCOs now, so those are financial counselors in the unit. If you don't have one, you don't have to go through them, but you can come straight to Financial Readiness. If you are interested in being a CFNCO, COMCS will get you the training that you need. But that way, you can help them on the ground at the unit. And then home buying, how many of you plan on buying a home? Someday? No, nobody's thinking about it, huh? Okay, wow. And then, of course, college tuition. Anybody looking at college? Okay. So Ms. Nikki Hines has a lot of information about grants, scholarships, funding college, yellow ribbon programs. So if you're interested before you go or after you come back, you can get with Ms. Nikki Hines, so she can give you information on that. Okay. So how many of you have a current budget? Your working budget? Yes, excellent. Okay. So take a look and see where you are now. Packing lists, things like that can cause a financial hardship prior to deployment. It could change a couple of times. You might have things that aren't required, but you'd like to have. So look and see how much you can do without going into debt prior to the deployment, okay? And then deployment spending. What are some things that might change? Childcare might come up. You might also have where you want, like, so how many of you have working spouses, and then the soldier provides supplemental childcare? Okay? One of the things that might change there is you might have to have paid childcare, and that might not be a normal expense as you're used to. So that's something you want to plan for, for that change. Cell phone, it sounds like you're not taking your cell phones, even if you have international plan, there could be additional charges there. When we went to the Bahamas, it was $10 a minute. When my husband was deployed back in, I'm going to really date myself now, in the 90s, we didn't have cell phones, and we used the phone, and we had $1,000 cellphone bill, or telephone bills. So it's really easy to rack up some extra expenses there if you're not paying attention. For those of you that are going to be going, you might want to take a look and see what maintenance you need to do on your vehicles prior to leaving, so your family members don't have to manage that. If you're looking at any winterization, tires maintenance, or just regular something's coming up, there's a funky noise, get it checked out, try to get it adjusted before you go. So that way, your family members can maintain things while you're gone. Let's see, change of COLA. So there may be a change in COLA if your family members leave Alaska for 30 or more days. So did you know you're not authorized for COLA if your family members leave for 30 or more days? So you want to plan for that. The soldier's responsible to put in the 4187 to change COLA to zero dependents. And then when the spouse is ready to come back, and the children are ready to come back, you want to put in a 4187 with the itinerary and boarding passes, prove that they traveled on that itinerary, to get the COLA started back up. Our pay change is instantaneous? No. So sometimes there is a recoupment, waiting to catch up, and then sometimes there, there'll be back pay. So we just want to make sure that you guys are planning on that. If your spouse doesn't already have access to my pay, and you want them to be able to print off an LES, why might they need an LES while you're gone? To buy a car? Ooh, you're going to buy a car while they're gone? Okay. So, big money, okay. So it could be that maybe the direct deposit came in and it was short, and they're trying to figure out what happened in the paycheck that caused the short pay. Or they want to apply for an AER loan. They're going to need a copy of that end-of-month LES. So we want to make sure that they can get access, but you don't want to do, just like your debit card, you don't want to share your PIN. So make sure you get them their own PIN, and it's called a restricted PIN, okay? And then meal deductions. So there may be meal deductions for meals provided while you're gone. This might not be something that you're not used to. It gets processed at the end of the deployment. So make sure you're saving, it's about $323.95. Make sure you're saving that money, because if it's for three months, how much does that add up to? About $900. So once they put that in, that could cause a reduced pay. So build up your savings, so you don't have any challenges there with your pay. Make sure you have good access to bank accounts, any bills that you have to pay, make sure you have those access codes, so that you don't have any trouble. A lot of times during deployment, on-time monthly payments are a challenge. And did you know that on-time monthly payments are 30% to 35% of your credit score? A lot of soldiers are negatively impacted during deployment, PCS, ETS transition. So we don't want you to have that happen to you. Okay. Service Member Civil Relief Act. So in the event with the deployment orders, you may be able to pause a cellphone contract, so you could put it in hibernation mode. You could cancel the service contract without paying the cancellation contract fee. You want to make sure that you let the person know that you're going to be using orders, deployment orders, to do that. Don't just cancel the service without letting them know and then giving them that information. Otherwise, you could end up with paying a fee. So we don't want that to happen to you, okay? Typically, if you're going on deployment, you might be able to get interest rates reduced, so you can take that into consideration. They may reduce it down to 6%. Some companies may go as low as zero, so you can check and see if they'll do that. The challenge is, is that this is such a short deployment, that it's not for the year deployment, so it may not qualify. So we want to make sure that you do ask, just in case the company is feeling generous, if you want to do that. Any emotional spending? Okay. How many of you have deployed before? Okay. So about 90 days before the deployment, you're all amped up, you're getting ready to go, and you want to buy a gun. And your spouse says what? No, yes, okay. So, oh, you're deploying, okay. So this typically happens with combat zone deployments, but sometimes we have emotional spending. Let's go on a big vacation, we never had a honeymoon, let's take a honeymoon. And then you spend a bunch of money before the deployment, and then the soldier deploys, and then they come back, and we do what? We spend some more money. Okay. So just think about prior to going, what are some plans that you want to do, so you don't have a lot of emotional spending? We want to make sure that you don't have any challenges there. When my husband and I, we would get ready for the deployments, sometimes we'd get into fights, and there'd be over stupid little things, and we would say, "Why are we fighting? This has never been an issue before." "I don't know." And he would say, "I don't know either." And so we would just realize, we're just very emotional prior to the deployment, and we're really just getting anxious about saying goodbye for the deployment period. So just be aware of those kind of things, and how it can relate to spending, because sometimes we spend money on what? Retail therapy. So if you want to try to manage your retail therapy, that can help. Okay. In the packet and on FT Wainwright ACS, is the, we have the hard copy packet for you here, and then we have it online, so you can pull it off. It has a deployment checklist, you know, bank information, legal information, childcare information, plus all the resources that are available through ACS. So please utilize our services, it's free. We help with not only crisis management, so if you have a challenge, you get an unforeseen notification that you owe some bill, vet it through us if you want. There are a lot of scams that happen while soldiers are deployed, and they contact the family member and say they owe this money. We're going to contact the Command, their job's going to be in jeopardy. Vet it through us, we do want to help you guys determine whether or not it's an actual valid issue, or if it's something that they're just trying to scam you out of the money. So contact us, let us know if you want to help with wealth building. We don't just do crisis management, so wealth building, you want to be millionaires when you retire, come see us, we will help you do that. Okay? Next slide. So how many of you have at least $1,000 emergency fund? Okay. I'd like to see more hands, especially on that one, hopefully you have more. But that'll handle the little things, the little unexpected things. And you want your family members to have sufficient income to handle those things. So how many of you are debt-free except for a mortgage? No car loans, no credit, so there's a few, we can help you with that. And then how many of you have three to six months saved for a PCS? Good. Okay. So I'd like for you to have about $10,000 in savings, okay, while you're in the military. If you have never done that before, or you have a hard time holding on to your savings, we can help you with that, okay? And then if you're ETSing, who's ETSing? Who's not staying in? Ooh, you're not sure? Okay. So you want to make sure that you have a plan. Back in the day, they used to say save three to six months for an ETS. But now it's moved to six to 12 months. So if you're debt-free, of course, you don't need as much. But if you're not, you want to have a strategic plan to make your on-time monthly payments through the transition. And we can help you with that, as long as you're more than 12 months away from the ETS. ACS Financial Readiness can help you with that. Once you're within your 12-month window, you want to go to Soldier for Life. They're going to be your subject matter experts with the transition, and they have the requirement at transition to help get you that training, okay? And if you have any questions about where that is, let us know. Kids call, oh, TSP. How many of you have at least 15% of your gross income going in TSP? Excellent. Okay. This is how you guys are going to become millionaires. You've got to get your money invested. If you don't know anything about it, come see me, and we will help you. All right. Estate planning and wealth building. Don't forget about setting some money aside for your later years, so we can help you with that as well. So my number is 353-4369. Ms. Nikki Hines is at 353-3459. We're located at the Welcome Center, Building 3401, Santiago Avenue. Please come and see us if we can help you either with financial planning or any issue that comes up during the deployment. We will try to get you to a resource to help resolve the issue, okay? Thank you very much. I'm going to be followed by Derek Flowers.
Good evening. How many of you are aware of our AER program, the services that we offer? Anyone? AER, organization incorporated in 1942 by the Secretary of War and Army Chief of Staff, in order to provide, find out the services to our soldiers who experience this hardship under emergency conditions. And we do that by providing interest-free loans, or grants, or a combination of the two. But it must be authorized category for assistance. What would be a legitimate need for assistance under AER? Ms. Till just mentioned one earlier. What would be an authorized legitimate financial need for assistance under AER? Emergency travel, death and death would be authorized category. Also, if you experience interruption in pay, and it's not your fault, also authorized category of assistance. Right? So we have three levels of approval on the AER. Our first level approval is our office at ACS, Building 3401. We're going to approve a loan up to $2,500 if you qualify for it. Anything above $2,500 to $3,500 is our level two. And that would be our Garrison Command Team. Anything above $3,500 would be our AER Headquarters for approval for assistance. As of 2015, September 2015, all soldiers have direct access to our office for assistance. Except soldiers who have less than 12 months in service. Also, soldiers that, except, the exception is soldiers that are placed on the high-risk list by the Command Team, such as UCMJ chapters, Med Board, they all have to go through the chain of command for assistance for AER. How many have heard about the Commander Referral Program? No, you haven't. No? Under Commander Referral Program, gives soldiers, allows soldiers, regardless of rank, to sit down with the Commander, and first for counseling, also budget, I mean, to talk about Army Research Relief, where they can provide assistance up to $1,500. Recommend approval up to $1,500. Special Power Attorney. While deployed, it's very important, while deployed, your spouse will need a Special Power Attorney for assistance. The Special Power Attorney is located in your package, and it must be notarized by, must be notarized by, before assistance. You can get it notarized and bring it to our office, we'll upload it, so that you won't lose it, and we already have it, in just in case you come down, come in for assistance. Emergency travel. For some reason, you'll place on emergency travel, while deployed, back to the lower 4 to 8, and you need some assistance. You can go to any military installation within the 50-mile radius, and they will provide assistance for you. If you're outside the 50-mile radius, you can use the American Red Cross, which should be up next to talk to you, give you the information about that. POV repairs. On the POV repair, there are certain items that you would need for assistance. You need your insurance, valid insurance, registration, and a driver's license, and all of those. Also, you'll need one valid, what's it called? Estimate from the dealer in order to provide assistance. AR campaign. This year, on the AR campaign, our guys, Commander Sarah Gold, of $70,000. Due to your effort, and members of here, soldiers and family members here on Fort Wainwright, we achieved a goal, and we surpassed the goal, actually, today, calculated, was 130,000. Today, calculated, was $133,000 donated to the AER campaign. So thanks to you guys for that support. Actually, our scholarship bonus has ended, but just to get some historical detail about the AER campaign, I'm gonna tell you how important it is. The donation that you receive, we receive for the AER campaign goes to soldiers helping soldiers. It goes to, when you were talking about those emergency travels and those interruption in pays, that's very important for the donations that we receive to our organization. All of the good pay go back out to you and helping soldiers and their family members. Is there any question at this time? Thank you, y'all be safe.
I'm Lori Wilson. I'm the Executive Director for the American Red Cross for the Interior Offices here. So what I want to talk to you, there's a lot of things I could talk to you about with the Red Cross, but for today, really the biggest thing is for you to know about the Red Cross is the emergency communications. How many of you know about the emergency communication service of the Red Cross? A few of you, that's good, but more of you need to know, especially as much as you deploy. So the emergency communications with the Red Cross is what's going to allow you, as a soldier, to return home, for your commander to be able to make that decision to return home if there's an emergency. Because we're the ones that are gonna verify it, we're gonna confirm it, and we're gonna make sure that everything is as it is and that it truly is an emergency. So if you have a death in the family, a lot of you have young children sitting here. And I gotta tell you, I just have a friend here at Fort Wainwright who just used this. Her child had an emergency, he suffered a traumatic brain injury. Her husband had just deployed. She's never used this service before, but it was critical to getting him home. Because of doing that, she was able to get him home quickly because we were able to verify and get everything done. And with that, if you come out with nothing else today, hearing me, in that packet that you get, your deployment packet, there is a sheet. And fill that information out. It is all of the information that we have to have in order to verify the communication. If we don't have that complete information, it slows us down. Because now we have to hunt it down, we have to track it down. And if this is something that's truly critical, every minute counts, every day counts, every hour counts. So we want to get you home and we have to have that to do it. Your commander, obviously, he has the ultimate say, they have the ultimate say on whether you come home or not, but that can't happen without us verifying the emergency. So you want to make sure your spouse has that, but you also want to make sure trusted friends have that information. You want to make sure your parents, your siblings, other people have that information because if something happens to your spouse, they obviously can't call you. So that's a very important thing, make sure not just them, not just your spouse, and not just in your house, that you have that information. Share this information with the other people in your family and in your trusted circle. In addition to that, you think you have it for the spouses, you think you know this information. But if something happens to your child, I am a mother, I can promise you everything you think you know, and my friend just told me this, everything I thought I knew went out the window. Thank God I had it written down. Because I couldn't remember his unit number, the number went out my head. I couldn't remember all the information I needed to know, but I had it written down so I was able to do it. So you think you know it because you do it all the time. But I promise you, when something happens, you may not, it's gonna go, it's gone. Because right now you're focused on what you need to focus on. So what are the sort of things that we're gonna be able to communicate? Death, medical, birth of a child, that's a great one, we want to communicate that. Financial issues, if there's an issue with childcare, childcare issues, things like that, we can get that information to your spouse. Who can we relay information on? It is your immediate family. So your spouse, your children, your siblings, your parents, your grandparents. Aunts and uncles do not fall within the immediate family category unless it's somebody that you can show or say has basically, they were like that parent to you, they were the ones that raised you, pretty much. In that sort of situation, then we can relay that information on that. So it's important to know that. There's a couple of ways that you can get that communication to us, using our 800 number, the 877-272-7337. You can call that 800 number and then it'll go to a call center and they'll start gathering all the information. And then one of our caseworker volunteers here in Alaska will do follow-up work with you. There's also an app on your phone. So for those of you who have apps, the Hero Care App, if you download that, you can also relay an emergency communication that way. With the soldiers going into a place where you're not gonna, where you're gonna have a lot of limited communication, knowing all the information that's in, that's on that piece of paper in your deployment pack is even more important. Because you're not gonna be able to talk to them first, be able to make sure that, you know, because a lot of times when you're deployed, these days, you know, you have, you can be talking. You already know about the emergency and they're saying, "Call the Red Cross, make the emergency communication so that I can come home." This is the information you need. But they're going where they just told you they're not gonna have access, ready access to cell service and communication. So you need to make sure you have it beforehand. Because I can, I also have watched people make these communication calls and if they don't have all the information, it's frustrating and it's scary to them and they, it can be, it adds a lot of stress that you don't need to add just by, you know, keeping something that, put it in your wallet, put it on your refrigerator, do something so that you can have all that. So if nothing else, when you leave here, go home and make sure your spouse has this information, okay? Other than that, you know, you guys have a good deployment. I hope I never see any of you except for to walk in and volunteer. Because if that happens, it means I didn't have to talk to you about anything bad. And then next.
Good evening. I'm Major Ryan Crowe and I'm the Brigade Judge Advocate for First Stryker. I'm here to talk to you about this power of attorneys and some things to think about as you're getting ready to head out on deployment. Right now, and we're gonna talk about some of kind of this, the two basics. I know a lot of you, if you've deployed before, you probably know a lot of this information, but it's a good refresher for the guys that haven't. This is also some great information. You might avoid some pitfalls going on, it might help you out, especially the loved ones that you're leaving back behind. So we'll start with the basics that's going on. There's two types of power of attorneys. There's general power of attorneys and special power of attorneys. The general power of attorney, essentially you are giving someone authority to act in your stead regardless of what it is. It is a very powerful document. They can open up bank accounts, take out loans, buy cars, all in your name and they're acting on your behalf. You are going to be responsible for their actions at the end of the day. Special power of attorney is not as broad. Special power of attorneys go directly to a specific action. Receiving household goods, getting ID cards, financial institutions, depending on what's going on, you can get a special power of attorney for a very specific action. Now, those two have a lot of power, mostly because they can execute on those actions regardless of you are there or not. Now with both power of attorneys, general and special, they are very hard to revoke. So be careful on who you're giving them to. Make sure you know who that person is. We have seen a lot of trouble, mostly because giving someone a general power of attorney, they can act in your stead. If you tell them that you revoke it, that person can still go to businesses, can still act on that power of attorney. So be careful before you start giving out. With general power of attorneys, a lot of times, you will have to sit down and talk to an attorney when you go to the legal assistance office so they can at least verify that you understand the ramifications that are gonna happen and how big of a document this is. Now, as you're starting to think about what kind of power of attorneys you may need as you're going out on deployment, know that not every place takes a general power of attorney to do what they need to do for the actions. It is up to the business or the service that you're doing to decide whether they want to actually accept that power of attorney. So start thinking about, a general power of attorney is a good stopgap for some of those services? But start thinking about what you may need, special power of attorneys. Are you, do you need to register your vehicle? ID cards, we already heard about that. Have you recently had your household goods shipped in? Get special power of attorneys for those. It's not gonna hurt to get them, keep them there, keep them safe, and then when you get back from the deployment, you can get rid of them. But start sitting down, talking with your significant other about what could happen and the possibilities of it. Also, explain to them where they are at. Make sure they know where they're at and they know how to use them when you go. It is something that if you've never had to use before, you might not understand the document that's there. Now, to get to any power of attorneys, you can go to the Legal Assistance Office, Building 1562. That's across from the Headquarters Building, across from Building 1555, right over by the flagpole, by the parade field there. It's done on a walk-in basis and you can just tell them what power of attorneys they'll need. Now, the person who's giving the power of attorney, the soldier normally, will have to be there with the ID card. But the person getting the power of attorney, the person whose authority is getting, does not necessarily have to be there. Only the soldier would have to be there at that point unless it's the other way around. But the person that's giving the power has to be there with their ID card to identify who they are and what they need. All right, I know that was kind of quick, but is there any immediate question on just power of attorneys? All right, guys, have a great deployment.
All right, gang, we're almost there. Just a couple of points. Having done this a number of times, there's some lessons learned and most were covered by ACS, so I'm not gonna go over them again, but little things. ATM debit credit cards, all right? Make sure you call your financial institution before you leave and let them know you're gonna be traveling to countries you're gonna be traveling to. Because you're gonna go turn it on and use it in Australia and then it's gonna get put on for a fraud warning, all right, and you're not gonna have access and then you're gonna have to work hard in order to get it turned off. So go ahead and make the call upfront so that stuff gets already programmed and you don't have any hiccups, all right? Again, long-term planning, all right? I recommend whatever agreements you come to as married couples and you set up, these plans are in place and generally accepted to last probably through, you know, after the first of the new year, all right? I know that sounds ridiculous and nobody wants to plan out that far and think, but in this instance, as it is with most others, this stuff is easier to turn off than it is to turn on. And if for some reason we get extended or we stay or we turn pathways into a couple countries longer or a couple months longer and you've only set yourself up for success through the first week in October, you're gonna be sadly mistaken and you're gonna have some problems. So go ahead and set yourselves up through January and then if we're back on schedule, you can turn that stuff off and execute as you normally would. But I just encourage a little bit longer-term planning as you guys look forward, all right? Hey, if I could right now, one other thing, Red Cross. For the Red Cross emergency services that were spoke of, the mailing address you should use is the battalion duty address, all right? Everything is gonna come back and through our staff duty and rear D with regards to that and then get pushed forward. So use the mailing address. Like I said, we will not have snail mail, we will not have an APO, we won't have any of that as we deploy on pathways. So the mailing address is gonna be back here, all right, for American Red Cross. With that, I want to bring out right now our rear D commander in NCOIC. Come on out, guys. Lieutenant Howell is gonna be our rear D commander initially. He will be replaced by Major Archer. Lieutenant Howell will be eventually replaced by Major Archer when Major Archer, our new S3, shows up here along about the first of August. And then Sergeant First Class Hagren, most of you guys know him. He was the rear D NCOIC for NTC. So he's got a ton of experience as a rear D NCOIC and he's gonna be our rear D NCOIC throughout pathways. So if you guys are looking for them, this is them. And if you need to get ahold of them, all right, staff duty is the way to go. So correct me when I say our staff duty number wrong here, 353-4603 is our staff duty number. If you need anything, you contact staff duty. 353-4603 and we'll get in touch with the right people that we need. So thanks, guys. The packet. ACS is referencing the packet and the information that you will get in the packet. The packet, ladies and gentlemen, is the packet that we will happily email out to you to a very good email address, all right? So that is our way of stressing the importance of a good email address that is also your ticket to leave here tonight with your company representatives with the sign-in. So as we did for the single soldiers before we leave, just want to get in, verify so that you sign in and then also provide that good email address with your company representatives so that we've got a good contact information for you and we can get you the things you need to know. So before we go to that, last chance, are there any questions of me? Yep, Willis?
Passport, sir. I think we don't have passports a lot of times. How will that work out?
Okay, so Willis's question was passports. If we don't have a passport, by the time we leave, how is that gonna work out? Right now, I can tell you that every senior leader that we have up until General Owens, the USAC commander, is engaged in getting passports for everybody going on pathways. What I can tell you is, is we will get passports and we will have a way to redeploy folks if we need to exit countries individually. What I can't tell you is when those passports are gonna show up. The plan that the battalion has right now is for your passports is as they will be returned, mailed back here to Fort Wainwright to the unit. The unit will collect those and then the unit will FedEx those directly to us in country and then we will get them into the soldier's hands. Does that answer your question, buddy? Okay. Any other questions? All right, Sergeant Major, where are you? XO, anything I missed? Okay. All right, with that team, I will turn it over to the companies, all right, for you guys to sign in and get your information. Thank you very much for attending tonight and your attendedness. I know it was a little bit long, but I appreciate it. Thanks very much, guys.